Okay, we'll come back to our regular meeting, reconvene the public session, get the city attorney to give us reported actions on the closed session items.
Yes, the city council considered the item listed on the agenda as well as adding an item of potential litigation, and there is, there are no announcements to be made.
Okay, and with that, we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Kevin Bass, who will also do the invocation.
Ready to begin? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God give me wisdom. Act to the better ever.
Thank you, Kevin. Now, we'll have the city council communications, reports, regional boards, regional boards and commissions. We'll call upon Mayor Tim, Mayor Pro Tem Bass to start the council communications. PowerPoint will appear on the screen for each council member.
So I don't think I, I had my WR cog, I had a whole bunch of meetings, but the WR cog, I'm now the chair, which is a lot of fun. But one of the things I did want to pass on, I sent you all the Beaumont decision, so I won't touch on that. But one of the things that is deeply, deeply concerning is that the move to automation has been accelerated, and the service industries in particular being really impacted. A lot of companies are using this time to convert away from people to machines, and it's, it's really, really accelerated. And the bad news is, is that it's not just a trend in the United States, it's a trend worldwide, and what's happening is, is it is downsizing the middle class. And so, one of the things that I don't know how we do it, because it's like the CNUSD is over here, and the Riverside City College District is here, and the cities are here surrounding them, and what really needs to happen is people need to work on those puppies. They need to, they need to tool up to begin to find ways that they're going to, to work into what is going to be a new and very frightening era. There are computers that literally, you will lose 100 jobs to one computer, and/or one machine. And so, I don't know how we'll do it, but I'm hoping in the next year, we can find a way to team with, I mean, it's really interesting, right now, the biggest hiring pool is out of the high schools. They're self-taught, they don't have a whole bunch of baggage with them, they don't have a bunch of preconceived notions, and they're trainable. So you've got kids walking out of high school who are self-taught, and literally, by the time they're 21, they're making some very good bucks, because they understand how to operate, develop, and, and work these machines. So I'm hoping that we can, I'm trying to, we're moving that way WR cog, but I think that the cities, Eastville, Riverside, Corona, Norco, Europa Valley, given that we actually have, we're spoiled, we have very good school systems, and people, I don't think always appreciate that, and I think somehow, we need to work with those in order to, to, to make a difference. Secondly, I'm going to include that, I mean, you guys may know this, but the amazingly, the Riverside City College District, Norco College, the Veterans Center, we were very worried it was going to be downsized, and I just discovered that it's going to be built exactly as it was planned, the groundbreaking is coming up, and they're going to do a film, and I'm going to be doing the voiceover, so I'm kind of, going to have fun with that. But I'm very excited about that project, and we have to give credit to Sabrina Cervantes, we have to give credit to Senator Roth, Riverside City College District, and mainly Norco residents, who really came out and said, this is what they wanted. This Veterans Center at Norcos College is literally one of the finest in the United States, so I'm really excited about that coming up, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Let's see who's next, Councilmember Grunmeyer.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay, who's next? Hoffman.
Yeah, I'm down here. I had a Riqua meeting, but that's not reporting tonight. I'll talk about the Veterans Committee update. We're going a little bit of different directions, as far as I know, this, we came as a, the Veterans Committee came to this council about doing the Gold Star, Blue Star Mother Monument and Memorial up there at Ingalls Park next to, to George Ingalls Memorial Plaza. So what we're going to do is, we, we're going a little different direction, we have a new design that we'll be bringing back to you, once we go and talk to the Gold and Blue Star Mothers for their approval, and then we're going to bring it back here to us. We're trying to jump onto a national program that where we can get additional funding, and also work with some of our local people here, and some of our developers, to get this thing up and running and paid for, but that'll be news coming up, and as soon as we get all put together, along with Councilman Mayor Pro Tem Bash and Director Petrie, we're going to put this together and get it going, hopefully have it done within the next two or three years, built and everything, so that's our wrap. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Newton.
Just that, tomorrow I have CDA board meeting. That's all I have to report, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got a vector report tonight. If you'll notice, the bug bites in 2020 look like the same way they looked in 1920. We have a list of bugs and pictures of their bites there, so we didn't put all of them on there, there's about 30 something in all, but I think we only put 10 or 12, didn't we, Matt? But it shows what the bites and what the bugs, that's for this area here, so we do have insects. And that's, that's all we, all we have on it tonight, I gave the RTA report last time, and next week we have RCTC, and then following week we have RTA again, so thank you, everybody. Okay, item two is the city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments are, the consent items will be heard, there will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items to be removed from the council. Consent calendar items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. So does anybody want to pull any items?
Pull item C is in Charles, and G is in George.
C and G?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
I was going to have to pull C also.
Okay, so we'll have a motion to...
Motion to approve the rest.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the remainder.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, item three is the items pulled from the consent calendar, we'll start with you, Ted.
Yeah, first of all, Steve, I know you're hiding back there, the first item on your planning commission, and this is a thank you for working with the church, I know all of us have been involved with that situation for several years, and I want to applaud you and your, and the staff for, for at least trying to get this thing going, and for that, so thank you. I know it was a long endeavor, and I know with Andy and John, I'm sure you guys, and Chad back there, I think we made progress, so thank you, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, I see some nodding heads, so thank you for doing that. My second reason to talk is on the zoning change.
You want to go ahead and let Kevin talk about that same one?
Did you want to talk about the church?
Only that I, I don't know how to do this, I, I would approve everything else, but I have to abstain from 5A, the church, because I have a conflict. So how do I do that? Do I just abstain from 5A, or do I abstain from the entire agenda?
Actually, you can vote on just approving the action statement, because that's not, that's not any substance related to...
Okay, so I can just, I can just vote on it? Oh, okay.
Now, when, when it, when something related to that comes to the council, that's a different subject, and you'll have to abstain and leave.
Okay, that, that's all I had.
Okay.
Ted, you want to make a motion to approve that one?
Well, it's, I can, we can prove both on C, either, I just want to know, on the other part, on the zoning, that's going to come back to the council, right, for final approval?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the only thing I wanted to make sure, I didn't know if we'd proven it here, but we're going to get to come back probably in mid-August?
Nineteenth.
The 19th? Okay, that's the only other thing I wanted to talk about. So with that, if nobody else has any questions, move to approve.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, Ted, you had the next item, was...
Yeah, item G, and I, and I, this is probably from either Dana or Andy, I'm just curious where it came from, I, we're, it's only, and I didn't know if some, if the state decided that we had to pay everybody, or if it's just something, I know it monetarily, it's not that big of an amount, and I, and I, sometimes when you're on these commissions, you do it, you volunteer, and you work hard on it, but I just wanted to know where the monetary amount came from, or why we, why are we doing it now? Just curious.
That's a good question. It didn't actually come from anywhere other than a matter of consistency, making sure that these folks are paid somewhere, the rest of the advisory bodies of the city council, whether I Street Trust, and Utilities Commission, Parks and Recs, Planning Commission, Historic Preservation Commission, all of these other advisory bodies are paid for attending the, their meetings, and of course, they also have the choice of declining that stipend, and some of them do do that. I think this issue, it came to my attention probably when we were forming the Citizens Oversight Committee, I wanted to include compensation, because I thought that was the right thing to do, I didn't see that, any difference between what they do and what the rest of the advisory bodies do, and at the time, there was, I was made to understand that we don't pay advisory councils or committees, and really didn't probe too much into that. So it's just, this is really a cleanup issue, to just put everybody on the same, you know, everyone the same.
Thank you, Andy, you can go talk to the guys at Riqua, because I don't get paid to sit on that one either.
That's all you...
So, I tell, but, but thank you, I just, I just want to know where it came from, and I agree with you, we should stay consistent all the way across, and not treat anybody different on these, so, unless somebody else has anything to say.
Anybody got any to add to it?
I'm, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, item four is public comments. This is the time when persons viewing, wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please email the city clerk so that you may be recognized. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendaised matters at the time such comments are made. City councils shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Item five is legislative matters. No new evidence will be heard from the public, as the public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. Item A, second reading, John? Have a motion and a second.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Okay, item, item six is the city council discussion items. Order of presentation for discussion items. Staff report presentation, council questions of staff, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral, council discussion and action. Item A is Chad.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is, began last, late last year, as you may recall, some questions arose about how the self-haul manure program was being implemented, and was supposed to be managed, and how participants were supposed to conduct themselves in, in the project. Many years ago, the city adopted a self-haul program to help facilitate, and to help residents and businesses have the choice to self-haul their manure if they chose to. They could stockpile it on-site, and then self-haul it through either the small truck, a commercial truck they may have, et cetera, but the intent is that they were self-hauling it, not hiring a third party to conduct that work, and that was the overall intent. Somewhere over the last couple of years, the understanding of that requirement got blurred, and some folks have been using third-party vendors, as we found out, for several years, in fact, to self-haul, in their minds, what's that, so self-haul is third-party vendor. So, because of that confusion, and some citations that were issued at the time, because of violating the self-haul requirement, council directed staff to, first and foremost, put a moratorium on citations, to look into the issue, to review our municipal code, to verify if there's any issues or discrepancies, et cetera, and come back with council with a, potentially a recommendation, whether any changes need to be made to the municipal code or our program, any augmentations that could be made to the services that are provided currently now by Waste Management. So we kind of figure out what, where we stand, maybe what is better, options that might help serve our residents better, to get them into compliance, if that's the issue, and to better understand mainly how many really people are out there doing self-haul, in not the manner that's intended. So as council recalls, we did do a moratorium, it was tend to be 90 days, that then expanded to, up to today, at this point, so we're well past the 90 days, and we extended it basically indefinitely through another motion of the council, because we needed more time, especially because of COVID, it was really, put things to a halt. Our intent was to come back to you after meeting with Waste Management, some of the residents, our manure subcommittee and staff, to bring something back to you, to kind of report where we stood, where we think there was issues or not, and kind of give you a We did quite a bit of extensive work on the staff level, in working with Waste Management, because, you know, one of the issues we want to understand is what are the services we're providing now, maybe where the gaps are that are disenfranchising our residents or businesses to not use them, because maybe they're, it's not right-sized for them and their needs. We want to understand the logistics of what Waste Management does, what, what the issues of the businesses are, and how they perform their, their daily operations for animal keeping and manure, and how they process, and their restrictions or issues on their properties of running space, and how maybe pickups can't be done because of, of the lack of space there, and an alternate vendor has other options that Waste Management doesn't. Primarily, through that effort, you know, we tried to figure out where we stood, we certainly found out that we had probably about 20 residents/businesses that were self-hauling. Some were self-hauling the right way, some were self-hauling through third parties, and we also, also found out, and we tried to compare that to the other businesses and residents who were using Waste Management, and, and we certainly realized there's a myriad of sizes of properties, operations, some using Waste Management, some not, and one of the primary issues is whether or not we could do something that would allow, because the biggest thing we heard from the folks that were self-hauling, using third-party vendors, is simply foremost, it's far cheaper to self-haul using these third-party vendors than it is these Waste Management. And the problem become for us, as staff is trying to provide a recommendation, you know, do we, there's been the suggestions, do we grandfather these places in, do we give them free pass, and allow them to continue to do it, when even though other businesses are using Waste Management, and are doing it the correct way, et cetera, one of the things we can't, we, we, in our discussions as, as the subcommittee was, and our basic principle, is that the original ordinance was created to allow self-haul, is to make sure that it allows an option other than Waste Management, because Waste Management is our default contract waste hauler for all levels of waste, no matter what it is, and that includes manure. But the self-haul allowed a resident simply bypass Waste Management, and allowed them to self-haul it someplace else, and to a proper recycling facility. Unfortunately, that self-haul got convoluted, where people were now simply just hiring third parties, which is a violation of our contract. Waste Management is a defined hauler, no other haulers are allowed, the only exception for haulers in the city are for other governmental agencies, which is like the school district, prison, they can have their own hauler. Those haulers still pay our franchise fee on that, but they can pick whatever hauler they want. So the intent of our self-haul was to allow people to, again, save a little money and self-haul it, and, and they could bypass that. If you needed a manure service, you're supposed to be using Waste Management. So one of the biggest issues we came to is fairness, and how do we change where we currently have, which is a self-haul ordinance that allows any customer to self-haul, whether you're a resident or business, you can self-haul equally, versus creating what I call haves and have-nots. So if we grandfathered people in who are currently improperly self-hauling now by using third parties, they are gaining a benefit and an advantage over other folks in the community that can't, are not doing that, they're using Waste Management, or they are, you know, self-hauling the right way, and we didn't want to create a list of have and have-nots, as I call it, creating an unfair economic, you know, advantage over other businesses that are trying to compete against each other in the city. But in the end, what we ultimately came to conclusion on the subcommittee, Councilman Newton and Councilman Hoffman are on that subcommittee, was not to change our current ordinance, other than upgrade the language, to make sure it's consistent in our two sections, and we have, just to clarify, we have two sections in our municipal code that cover and talk about manure and self-haul, and there's a reason for that. 6.42 is our, our base handling of all trash services, and manure is part of that. 6.45 specifically was brought in, in the last 10 years, because we were specifically trying to address, and a document to the state, who at the time was unsatisfied with our compliance in NPDS requirements for managing runoff related to manure and other issues, and contaminating our potential, our local waters, city specifically developed that section to address the city's desire and willingness to manage and handle the proper storage of manure, and transporting of manure, if you're self-hauling, in this particular case, of manure, so that it was properly contained, controlled, and you weren't getting just the piles sticking out there and runoff when storms would come, so that was specifically there, because one of the comments was made, is why don't we just combine the two sections into one, and not make it as confusing? My recommendation was to leave them separate, because it specifically deals with the questions that the state has for us, related to NPDS. What we ultimately did is just made sure that the language regarding self-hauling was absolutely the same in each ordinance, in each, in each section of the municipal code, so that no matter which one you happened to read, and not realize there was another section, it still tells you the proper definition of what self-hauling is, and how it's to be conducted. The, and so ultimately, the recommendation out of the subcommittee, which we bring forth today, is, it has multiple parts, is one is to update the municipal code in both these sections, so they're consistent, especially when it comes to self-hauling. In that, again, self-hauling is intent, and only purpose is for the homeowner or business owner to self-haul using their own equipment and their own staff, to take that material to an acceptable and approved location that recycles that material, because we still want to count that material towards our totals, and we want to get reports on that material... want to count that material towards our totals, and we want to get reports on that material on an annual basis, so we can document that with the state. Part of the process is we evaluated our application and compliance process, because right now, we only have five people as of today that are, have an application and a permit to self-haul, and we know there's a lot more out there. Part of that process is to make sure that staff on our level, when people are coming in, we're clearly giving them proper description of what self-haul is and their requirements, and what they're signing and what they're documenting in that self-haul permit of where they're taking the material and who's performing that function. And we're following up with them, because right now, our current application basically indicates that when they reapply for their application on an annual basis, right now it's just annually, that they must give us a minimum number of trip tickets so that we can document that you made efforts and you took them to an appropriate location, and then we can count that tonnage and report it to the state. Folks who don't provide that, then we don't renew their permit since, because they didn't provide evidence they met those requirements. So certainly for us internally as staff is, folks in different departments touch different people in regards to getting information. We've recognized that folks are coming for a business license, and there's information on a business license that talks about if you have horses, are you self-hauling? So part of this is, and they say yes, and they think they're done. And some people confuse, well, I signed this and it was right in my permit, and I thought I could self-haul now. So part of this is going through our documentation to find out where, what we're communicating to people at different levels, and either clear that information up or eliminate it so that we're focused on, this is the proper paperwork where we talk about self-hauling. Educating the staff in each department says, when you get these kind of questions, you need to direct them to the right staff, the right department, so they can be properly given the information that's needed to properly self-haul if they want to do it, and understand the parameters of that. And so there's a lot of education that we need to do in reeducating our staff, especially because staff changes out. Paperwork we found is antiquated, you know, from different departments. So we're going to work together as departments and make sure and find out who's got what information. Certainly, we have, Public Works has our permit, and that's the master one, but looking at other departments, see what might be out there that's caused this confusion. And one of them is related to business licenses. So we're going to resolve that issue and eliminate that question, because it really is a question that's not needed when somebody's applying for a business license. The other element of this is, so how do we resolve this issue moving forward with the existing people that are self-hauling using third parties? Ultimately, the subcommittee decided that, number one, update the municipal code so they're correct, correct all our, number two, correct all informational items that we hand to customers and provide to them. Number three is we need to get out there and educate and identify all these businesses and give them notification now that they must convert to Waste Management or properly self-haul. Question is, how much time do we want to give them? I mean, because this is, fundamentally, this is a big change. And ultimately, we elected this, let's give them to the end of the year. Gives them at least six months. At the time when we were trying to bring this forward, it was a little bit longer, but, you know, with COVID and everything else, we were holding off on this discussion because we hoped that we'd have public meetings again where folks can come talk about this item, but since it's unlikely that this is going to change anytime soon, we really wanted to get this changed now, at least in the municipal code, and then we'll start outreach into all the businesses, all the residents that we know of that doing, that are doing self-hauling, even those that aren't, just to make aware of it. And then ourselves and Waste Management are going to try to work with each of these locations to sit down with them, explain the issues, why we're doing what we're doing, what the purpose is, and find out if we can right-size them, explain what Waste Management's rates are, what services they have. Waste Management did just add one additional container this year because prior, it was either a two-cubic yard bin or 10-cubic yard bin. Now they offer a seven-cubic yard bin. So it's trying to find out and educate ourselves and learn from them is what is your needs, how much are you producing? Here's what it would likely cost you based off what you told us in a year. And then they're ultimately going to have to make that decision to either truly self-haul and what it needs to be done, and what we've learned is it's gotten even more complicated for some of these businesses who used to self-haul. Now the state's regulations regarding qualifications for drivers for any large truck, now they require a higher specialized license, which is discouraging to some of these folks, you know, it's, they couldn't do what they did 10 years ago. Just drive in a semi down the road and they could do it. Now you've got to have your specialized license, et cetera, because one of the larger farmer businesses we went to explained, yeah, we stopped doing it because of that reason, but now we're looking at potentially going, his wife and him getting, go getting their license so they can truly self-haul, but if the city ends up going this route. So there's issues on every side, but ultimately, the biggest problem is creating the haves and have-nots versus just the rule in place allows fairness. And we felt that as staff, as the subcommittee was, we need to do, if we're going to implement this process, then we need to get out there and make ourselves available as much as we have to to all these businesses to help work with them so they can plan for what this is going to impact them on their bottom line, how they're going to notify their customers of, here's our likely cost, here's what I have to pass to you, et cetera. Because keep in mind, there's a lot of businesses that are currently doing the same with Waste Management now. They're showing that you can survive and you can effectively have a business with Waste Management, and so it's really, it's indicating to them that you can self-haul if you do it this way, and it'll be acceptable. If you fail to do that, you would get cited, we would certainly cite the third party, and we would most likely send a letter through the city attorney to that third party indicating they must cease and desist in operating in the city. But our goal, assuming tonight, the ordinances get passed as they're modified, and there are minor changes to make sure everything is cleaned up, but the direction or the recommendation was that we then outreach to each of these businesses that we know that are self-hauling, whether they're properly doing it or not, and work with them to help them explain that they have the next five, six months to get in compliance as of January 1. We would then enact the rules and requirements such that if you were caught self-hauling with a third party, which is really not self-hauling, you would be cited. And we would explain the process, know the council is aware of this issue, we've, you know, because they're going to be right back here going, we don't understand. We at least want to document, demonstrate that staff has gone out and tried to outreach to everybody we possibly could or were new of to explain that issue. So that is our proposal and game plan of how to address this issue. I welcome any comments or considerations or suggestions you have regarding things we might want to consider as we move forward, if ultimately this is something the council wants to do. And we can certainly come back again and talk about the plan or however we want to do this, but like, obviously, tonight's really just about updating the ordinance, make sure they're correct. But this is the recommendation at this time as far as what the subcommittee came ultimately decided on and what was put forth to the entire council.
I could also add a few more comments to supplement what Chad said. In addition to the challenges of determining where we draw this line, that will be acceptable to both residents and Waste Management with respect to who is allowed to self-haul using third-party and who is not, recognizing the franchise agreement that we have with Waste Management. I do want to point out that there are some other implementational issues that we looked at, just to level the playing field here, is that if we are to allow third parties to come into this business and do self-haul on behalf of some residents, there are some other issues we have to deal with, such as liability-related issues. What level of performance bonds do they have to provide? They would have to provide general reliability, workers' comp liability, and online insurance requirements in order to be able to do that type of business here in the city of Norco, compatible to what is required of Waste Management to do the same. We also talked, I think Chad mentioned the reporting requirements, and also their equipment requirements. Also, to be factored in our processes, the ability to pay franchise fee, I know Chad did mention that, but I do want to reemphasize that because that is a way that we have to, again, level the playing field. We can't subject some residents to paying franchise fees whereas others who are using these third-party haulers are not, in fact, doing that. So these are some implementational issues we considered in terms of trying to come up with any walkable solution. Unfortunately, there wasn't that too many options out there that we think are viable other than get everybody management, as well as provide some other diseducation and some additional potential service levels for those who have large amounts of money.
Chad, before we start on the question, I've got one. How many did you say were licensed to self-haul?
Currently, we only have five people for this current calendar year that have a permit.
Okay. All right. Okay, who wants to start? Ted?
You know, I do, but I think first check with Dana, because I looked through the, this is a very important issue here in town, and so I wanted to see from Dana, do we have any public comments? Anybody say anything on there? I'm just curious.
We've received no public comments on this. I've received no calls either.
Okay, because, and just checking the thing, there's nine people watching this, the council, and I was probably one of them, so that's eight. So that's, I'm just, we have, the residents have to understand that we've been a long time, and they, this is, this would have been their opportunity to get involved. So if we approve this thing tonight, and then it goes to a second reading, so that'd be mid-August, 30 days after that, it wouldn't get approved. Is that the way it works?
Correct.
Goes in the force. And I agree with you, Chad, that because this is such a sensitive issue, that we need to have that, to extend that out until the first of the year before. We do a lot of warnings and a lot of education, because it's going to, this affects, like Kevin's going to tell me, this affects the horsekeeping in town, how we honedle for some of these large ranches. And he's beat this into me, that the fact that everything we do, we scaring away the horse owners here in town because of the manure. I don't want to do that. But we're stuck, and it is. And I'm glad you guys cleaned that up, by the way. So my next question is to Lizette, did we clean up that application when somebody turns in a business license area in the horse business, and that little application, that little card that said, oh, I self-haul, that's all gone? Probably you weren't aware of that one. Do you remember one, Brian? You're aware of it.
Nobody even knows where this form came from. It's apparently a form that has been in existence for, before anybody that is currently here, we don't even know how it got started. And certainly, we don't think it's a form that we need because we don't know the purpose of it. And a business license would not be using those forms or sending it out to people. I don't even know where I could get it from, so that's something we need to plug that hole.
So that's gone? Good.
If it's not, it will be. Yeah, it will be if it's not.
Okay, well, just wherever, wherever that came from, we have to get rid of that, because that was, that was confusing, because I said, okay. So you want to tell me there's five self-haulers? That's all we got right now?
Correct.
How many do we anticipate? I thought we had at least more when we looked at that list.
Oh, we do. I mean, well, again, legal.
Okay.
Five. When we started this process, looking at it, we had probably, when we started looking at this in 19, we had six, so a lot of these were carried over. There are many that are, we know are self-hauling because when we pulled the business licenses and compared them to the services that they currently have, several of them didn't have Waste Management for manure, but we know there are an animal-keeping property. So, and then just talking to some of these businesses or residents, they confirmed, yeah, we self-haul and/or we are using a third-party.
There was at least 20 or 30, correct?
There's about 25, I believe.
Okay, yeah, because I remember that, that number came up.
Between the 25, I think we determined there's actually three different self-haulers that people are using.
And you guys identified them, and you've contacted all those people. And I appreciate Waste Management working on the seven-yard bin. Again, we have to make this comfortable for, to residents and how would they get afford. So update the code, get trip tickets. That's all questions. Thank you.
Who else was on that committee?
Councilman Hoffman, Councilman Newton, myself, Andy, Brian, Petrie.
Residents?
No, it was just the subcommittee.
Were any residents contacted about this meeting tonight?
Other than the public notice? No.
And so basically, residents just, so we're does the school district and does Riverside City College. Government agencies are given the opportunity to negotiate for a better deal.
Correct.
Residents will not be.
I might indicate that it's statutory.
No, this is nobody's fault.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying that the exclusion for other entities, particularly the school district, was the subject of much litigation in the statute.
Yeah, no, I understand all that. I'll leave it for comments. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Robin.
Chad, I just have a couple of questions for clarification on process and a couple of things you mentioned. So at this point in time tonight, you're just asking for an approval of an ordinance and cleaning up the municipal code. Then it would roll into an educational campaign, which you mentioned, you would partner with Waste Management. So what is Waste Management's role, and what do they contribute to the education campaign process?
Part of that's going to be the city and Waste Management working together to develop specific material that we can use to target specifically for self-hauling and manure that will discuss not only the self-haul process and how it's supposed to be done, and obviously advising people that if you're doing it the incorrect way, that it'll be subject to fines beginning January 1, et cetera. But however, the city and Waste Management want to work with you, discuss your needs and issues to find out how we can maybe right-size you to the right level of services that meet your needs, asking to set up and work with them to get an appointment, to meet with them on-site, to review their process, to understand how they operate on a daily basis, to find out really how they operate now and how maybe Waste Management can fill that role, and so we can give them the education of the bins and sizes available, the costs that it would likely occur, and that way they can make an educated decision of what will work for them, whether or not self-hauling in the true way, if that works for them, or if, and/or how it will, what will cost them to do the proper way of using Waste Management as the hauler versus a third-party hauler. So our goal is to try to get in front of them and then talk to them, because again, there's certainly a lot of people we haven't had an opportunity to talk to about this. We've had a few folks that invited us on their property so we could see what was going on and share their experience in using some of these third-party haulers and why they use them. Now it's really just trying to outreach them and tell them, look, here's what, if it's determined that the city and council wants to use the policy as it is now, continue the grace period that's there, and then educate, work with them that January 1 is the date, you need to get in compliance at that point, whether you get in compliance now or you just wait till then to get the bins that are required. After that point, you can and will be cited, and if the issues come back to council again, the understanding would be, well, this is what we decided on as a council, and this is the process, et cetera. So we just, my goal is to get out there and just talk with people and explain to them, what can I give them to help them understand as much as possible their options and what they need to do to comply.
Okay, so specifically, would Waste Management provide printed materials, social media materials? They would provide staff to go with you for onsite visits and education with these, like, specifically have those things been agreed upon in the subcommittee that Waste Management would provide X, Y, and Z?
I don't know if they were agreed upon, but that is certainly the expectation, that is my expectation, and I've already expressed that, and I've gotten the concurrence from Waste Management, that's what they will do. They understand that this is a significantly important issue to this community. They were at these field meetings, they were there to observe and ask questions, et cetera. They understand that this is not something small, and that they need to offer more, and one of their efforts was, again, to provide a different type of bin, but it's, they understand, my expectation to them is they're going to be out there giving me the literature, working, printing it out, doing, like I said, networking with the residents in hand with us, not by themselves, because I want them to understand, residents, that this is the city informing us, not Waste Management trying to garner more business. This is the city trying to work with you to get in compliance. Waste Management's just... Waste Management's just here to facilitate and ask particular questions that they're best to help answer, as far as how the service would be done, what's the limitations, do I have to do improvements on my property for you to gain access, things like that. They'll be in part of the discussion, but it will be a true partnership, you know, to get this process and to get this information out.
And so, will it be people from your department going with Waste Management?
Most likely, because I have been spearheading this whole thing, it will be me directly, working with Waste Management, and they usually have three different people. It'd be Glenda Lizette, and I think it's Manuel, that's, and which is their on-field, outfield service person, meeting with each individual, explain, this is how it would occur. This is what we can do.
Okay. So, on the educational campaign, moving to kind of the general topic, what does that look like to you? Is that rolling it out in top stories, a couple of times spaced out? Is that putting something in a utility bill that every single resident gets, because you've said that there's approximately 25, so we could guess there's probably more that we don't know about? So, what are we going to do to make sure that this education campaign is truly community-wide and reaching everyone that we potentially need to meet, considering that I think we rely on social media a lot, and a lot of people just have kind of shied away from certain types of social media, just to, I guess, make their lives less stressful, probably? And so, what are we going to do as far as that campaign and making sure everybody is, is accessed or reached with the information?
I certainly envision, in general, we would use all the social media options to inform people about what we're trying to do, what's going on, but we would have a much more robust, specific target of outreach and material to certainly the first and foremost, those folks that we believe are the, are talking audience and talk with them, and continually work with them and try to get them, because my goal is to get a meeting with them. I want them to know that they just didn't get a piece of paper, and they were informed, that I can say, I talked with this individual, this group, and say, we gave them the information. I personally met with them, Waste Management met with them, and we gave them all of your candidates, now a decision they have to make what they want to do. Do they want to do self haul the right way? They're going to continue on the way they were doing, or they're going to convert to Waste Management? But our goal is to outreach to the ones we think we know are the, are the largest target folks that we, we've heard of, and we've cited before, and work with them in giving the extra. Other than that, we will always use the general social media to, and that's why I want to create, I envision of creating generic flyers and information that gives people an update and reminders about manure and self hauling and the program, but give more targeted information to those folks that, that we know of and are aware of, or that we find out about during the process. So, though, I envision various levels of communication. That hasn't been developed yet, because I didn't really develop anything until I kind of understood, and ultimately, if there's a consensus to move this direction, and then it would be, you know, myself and Kelly Newton and Waste Management kind of figuring out what types of flyers we're going to develop, how they would look, et cetera, and how we get that message out.
Okay. So, just to kind of tie into that a little bit, if we're just going to do kind of a general, I would request that we look at the manure cleanliness, which sounds really weird, but I know each year, we get that standard letter, like, there's a bunch of trash in your manure, we're going to increase your rates by X, Y, Z. And so, if we're already going to have Waste Management creating literature and doing those things, I would ask that we kind of make it a little bit broader in that sense, so that we can kind of tackle a couple of issues regarding manure at one time, that people know it's important that even if you just have the cart, the black cart that goes out to the street, your manure still needs to be clean, free from trash and debris, all of that kind of stuff. And then put an option on there, are you interested in a visit from city staff and/or Waste Management to look at what your protocols are at your place, and is there a way you can save money? Because when we got the Waste Management stuff the other day, I was sitting there doing the math, is it better for me to have a black bin, or is it better for me to do the other one? And I think if we're going to have this outreach, that offering that to anybody that wants that service is definitely something that we should provide. And then my last question is, with an implementation date of January 1, 2020, will we at that point start with warnings and then move into the citations and not hit people with citations right off the bat, or what do you envision that looking like?
I don't think we've gotten that far, as far as when the clock strikes, how are we going to do it? We might take a softer approach, kind of like we've done with the we debatement, and say, okay, we're going to give you a gentle reminder. We, we remind them, we sent this material, you should have received it, in case you didn't, here it is, X, Y, Z. And then after that, it'd be a citation. So, probably the best thing is to do with that approach. We hadn't discussed it yet, but it's probably be a better way, is to kind of give it an advanced warning.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Grunmeyer, normally, we'll do that, in this case, with a compliance notice, and then that is typically, that runs from 10 or 30 days. We can talk about that. That allows them to go back and figure out self haul or sign up with Waste Management. And then upon that, we re-inspect, if they've got it all in place, we move down the road or we sign.
Greg?
First of all, I want to thank staff and Councilmember Hoffman for all the time that you put in on this topic, along with the subcommittee. I have a couple of questions, a somewhat parallel Councilmember Grunmeyer's comments. Kind of hindsight, I think we kind of got into this whole mess and all this trouble because we didn't have a clear direction, not, we didn't have clear paperwork, and we'll be able to get that straightened out. So, one of my questions is for Lizette, as far as Finance Department, how much time do you think you're going to need to make sure we're all on the same page with staff and Public Works, as far as having this all concise and ready to present to the public? Just a guesstimate.
In updating our business license forms, I know some of them, like Chad said, they've been there for years in, in practice, so that's something that could easily, you know, in a couple of weeks, we could go through them and see what changes, you know, remove anything regarding self haul, questions from those forms, making sure they're not online as well. So, I'm thinking a couple of weeks just to review all those forms, updating those forms, and, you know, having IT upload them in the, in the website. Now, with the procedures on this, when, currently, when we get any questions regarding self haul, we do refer them back to Public Works, to Shenandoah, to give them the self haul permit. We don't do that process.
Okay. So, do you think a month, couple of months, to maybe where we're all coordinated and ready to roll that out as far as your end? Not, not with the outreach yet, just with your specific end?
With us, it should be, you know, within probably two to three weeks.
Oh, okay. All right.
Maybe, I think, part of the confusion was, there was this mystery paper that no one understood.
Right.
That had a line on there, it talked about, do you, do you self haul, and, or how many horses you have, and, but we know, no one could even answer, what was the form for? So, the reality is, is all we are aware of is that form, just get rid of it, because we don't know where it came from, we don't know where, so at this point, just stop using it, and then there are no other forms, other than the one that Public Works issues.
Because we're almost starting over, for the benefit of the rest of the council, the, in our, one of our first subcommittee meetings, the list we were given of all the self haul participants, it was all over the place. I mean, it, it was people you know didn't self haul, were listed as self haul people, and it was just, it was a complete mess. And, and where Chad mentioned, you know, we know that there's actually legitimately maybe four or five that were, you know, proper today. I don't know what that list had, 30 or 40 names, and it was just...
Yeah, we, we took the...
It was a shotgun approach.
Yeah, and the list that Councilman Newton's referring to is, we, since I only had about five to six people actually signed up, and we knew there were a lot more, is trying to figure out who they might be, is we pulled the business licenses for animal keeping. And then from that, I actually pulled the utility bills for those businesses and determined which ones said Waste Management, which one didn't. So, then we can identify, okay, all these folks on this list that we believe have animal keeping, the others that don't, anyone doesn't have Waste Management is doing something else. So, that's what I think Councilman is referring to, is we had this list, it was all over the place.
So, I appreciate that, Chad. I guess some of my concerns with this also is, I have no confidence in Waste Management to participate in the outreach, as, as I think you're expecting them to do that. That burden's going to be all on staff, and I just don't see where they're motivated. I didn't get that read from them in the subcommittee meetings that we had, other than, maybe they'll participate with some, you know, printing, or some printing brochures that we would develop. Like I said, I, I don't have the confidence in them to really participate in outreach that's going to be city and city staff, and then that also is going to be very limited. Another part of my reason for that is that with all the conversations we had with, with our last contract a few meetings ago, that the only really thing they came up with was, we'll, we'll offer you a seven-yard lowboy bin to dump your manure in, which will be less money. And of course, it'll be less money, because the capacity is less, but the trucking cost is exactly the same, because it's the same truck, whether it picks up a seven-yard bin or a 30-yard container. So, I have concerns about that. And I guess what's difficult for me is that, I appreciate all, like I said, all the work that Ted's put into it and staff's put into it. I just feel we're missing something, that this is a solution, it, it's doable and possibly workable, but there's something missing, and I don't, I just don't know what it is. But, other than my gut feeling that we, we're going to postpone this to the end of the year, we're not going to really be able to have any public outreach or public contact with the people that will self haul at the end of the day. I just, maybe we're just getting a little ahead of ourselves with this, and it wouldn't bother me if we wait till the first of the year, before we move forward with this whole, you know, with the whole program and saying, you know, January 1, here's going to be your reminder, and, you know, we're going to be under the gun, we'll have everything, all the, the whole process ready to go. Just, there's something missing, but I can't tell you what it is. And that's all I have right now, Mayor.
And I think to that comment, just, again, this is not a frozen issue or stat, I mean, we can always come back and engage this issue again, if that magic bullet shows up, if we kind of figure out something that works, so we're never, you know, stuck with this solution. Again, and I welcome a solution that somehow helps out the community, but for right now, we're limited in the requirements of our agreement, the expectation of our code enforcement to enforce the rules that we have out there that we've been asked right now to not enforce. And, and so, it's just us trying to fix what, what we, we recognize, we contributed in the process by not properly informing and our residents when they're coming to the counter and explaining to them, having the right information online. So, we're to blame on this process, and we're not, we're not diverting from that. And so, and part of that process, our urgent desire is to get out and educate the people again, now that we have an understanding that there probably won't be this magic bullet that we're going to use, because we haven't figured it out yet, that at least let's get the start of that education as much as we can, and opportunity to meet with them one-on-one, and, but have an end date, say, look, at this point, this is where we need everybody in compliance. Otherwise, everybody will ignore it, because there is no finality date, for what it's worth. But it doesn't mean we can't come back to this and engage it again and again, at another time where folks can come to the meeting and give their feedback and talk about their stories. But we have talked with a lot of those folks that have those homes, and I unfortunately don't have, Councilman talked about, a, a solution, because if we let them continue to use the third-party hauler, we're in violation of our agreement with Waste Management. And it just doesn't look good if we're having a blind eye to our obligations to, to help, right, I mean, our desire to help out our community, and that's where we're stuck. But it might be ultimately, the magic bullet, might be looking at when the next contract comes up and finding a better service, what that is, that's included, that they must bring to the table that does this thing. And since we've learned these lessons, that if you're going to be a hauler, you must have this type of service, where you do come, and you pick up the manure, and you, with the tractor, and you haul it off, and what's that cost? And, but for right now, we don't have that ability to, to do that, but that's certainly something we'll keep in our head when we're talking with future...
Well, we've been looking for that magic bullet for years, and, excuse me, I know, Ted, you, we've all spent enough time on trying to, you know, what system, what's out there that's going to work? And from digesters to briquettes, I think was the last one we had, a guy from Florida. You know, it's just like, there's something out there. I don't know if that's what my guts telling me or not, but it, it's not, hey, I'll give you a seven-yard bin, you know, for $30 less a month. There's, there's a bigger answer out there. So, thank you, Mayor.
Kevin, did you have more?
If, if we're getting to the comments part, remember it is, I'm sorry, it isn't a public comment.
Yeah, that's right.
But, but we have no cards, is that correct?
We have no public comment this time.
So, I appreciate the work. I, when I look at these views, I try to look at the big picture. How do we protect animal keeping in the city of Norco? Because animal keeping to outsiders is, it's a hobby, and to us, it's a lifestyle. For me, Greg, what's missing is the public. Where are they? And I am not going to vote for this until I hear from the public. I totally get that we're out of compliance, but I also, I go back to the original idea of the scout service, and I've tried many times to get a discussion, and nobody wants to discuss it. That was a catastrophic move for animal keeping in the city of Norco. So, now, this was prompted by residents, and I don't even know if they know this is happening, and they're going to say this is done in the dark of the night, which it kind of is, and we're going to look at January 21, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and people are flat-out terrified. And we're trying to maintain a lifestyle in the midst of a terrifying pandemic. And I really, truthfully, I think in many, many ways, I don't think anybody in this room, I'm not pointing fingers whatsoever, but I do believe many of our legislators are near and against it. They, they do not know what's going on. So, I have, I won't support January 21. I totally get the contract. I totally agree with Greg. You know, I thought we were going to get all kinds of help from Waste Management in this contract, which I did not vote for, but I thought they'd be right on board. I mean, when we call Glenda, we call them, they're Johnny on the spot for us. But, to my mind, I don't think they're going to help us with this, and besides, what are they really going to do? And a lot of people just can't afford to get the manure off their property. I think that the whole, I'm really disappointed that, I mean, going back to the accessory building thing, the paperwork, the application from 2010 was never changed. Planning commissioners didn't even know what the law said, and now I'm here and we have another one. I mean, maybe one of the things we need to do is put a committee together, and, you know, I hate to do that to staff, because staff is being impacted by this pandemic. I don't understand why the, I thought that the subcommittee was going to have at least a couple of residents in it, and so, for me, I would love to postpone this and make sure we notify Lori, we notify, we notify some of the people, all the people that spoke that night, and tell them, we are going to be hearing this issue. Tell them the truth, we've got a contract with Waste Management, we have a difficulty, and I would like to postpone this vote, because the thing for me ultimately is the public. And I think we can figure it out, that they can speak and they can talk, they, because otherwise, they're going to look at this and say, oh, look what they did. And ultimately, we can't solve, the truth is, we can't solve their problem, which is they can't afford to get the manure off their property, which means that's another slug of horses that may be leaving the city of Norco. So, and again, I'm not, I'm not coming down on you, it's, it's, everybody here knows what the problem is, but I won't be supporting this until I can see... until I can see some people standing at the podium and letting me know how they feel. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I can comment just very quickly, what you really have before you tonight as a practical matter is simply making clear what your current ordinance says, so that it's not inconsistent. If you don't do anything tonight or in the future, we have the current ordinance, which says the same thing, has the same impacts that you're concerned about. So, it's really almost kind of steps. One is, is the ordinance. Second is, that point in time in which you enforce it. Third is figuring some way of not having to have this kind of ordinance.
If you can figure out a way to get that out to the public and make them understand what you just said, but the reality is, that's actually, we all understand it, but what you just said is extremely complicated, especially when people are terrified, John. So, and I totally understand where you're coming from. And for me, again, the thing missing is, I need, I need to hear from the public, and I, I, you did a lot of work, but thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Chad, initially, when we looked at this, there were two, they had the ordinance, which you have here, which we had to fix. Wasn't there another section that was not written clearly, that didn't talk about self-haul and the obligations on self-haul?
One of the two, you mean?
Yeah, the two of the two.
They both talked about it, but one wasn't as detailed as the other because one was specifically written to deal with self-hauling, and the other one mentioned it impassively.
How you had the...
Now, we made them exactly the same, so they are very detailed, and they duplicate each other. They're just two different, two different chapters.
Okay, but we cleaned that one up.
Absolutely. That was one of the things we pointed out.
And I think that's what John was pointing out, is that we cleaned up that mess. But, I'm kind of with Kevin, this, this is, like I said, well, I checked Matt, and Matt can probably tell me how many, how many people are viewing this now, Matt? Eight. This is very important. I mean, this is, you know, I know we put out the public notices and things like that, and, and nothing against staff because that's, you do exactly what you're supposed to do, but this is tough to get the people behind you and figure out what we need to get done and not listening to them because it does affect property. We can clean it up, and at least that part, but I don't think we ought to do any enacting. And I understood on this thing for a while. The other thing is, we also have an obligation because we have a contract with Waste Management. And so, to your knowledge, Chad, is there any, are those third haulers, third-party haulers still working?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Every day, if you look around, you'll see those big black dump trucks, dump trailers.
Just for the enforcement, we are not enforcing that, so there are self-haulers in town doing that. The only time we do enforce is if we have excessive manure and a complaint on our property, then we do enforce that.
But then I'm, I'm worried there...
Just, just for clarification, so I can, and I'm just going to go on the lines of the city attorney. And tonight is mainly about coming back to you with the modifications that clean up the ordinance, which were part of the problem. In addition to that, was to kind of explain our, our grander plan, which I'm not expecting you to approve tonight, but I want to give you the full picture of what we're doing. It's not just this and nothing else. It does not mean, for good, we can't come back with a planned meeting that we notice and put information out there that we're going to have this discussion about potentially having a deadline. The deadline or the, the direction that you put in place or order that you put in place to not enforce citations is still in effect. That doesn't go away. It's still in effect because we specifically stated that it will stay in effect until COVID-19 issues and public meetings can resume. So, and that hasn't happened yet, so unfortunately, and, so it doesn't mean we can't come back. What I'm hoping to do is I don't want to wait till a meeting to start outreach, because I want to start the education now, because again, even when they finally come in, you're going to have folks in here who are going to complain that they are the, they're going to be hurt by forcing them to do that, but you're also, what you're probably not going to get is the folks that are, are using Waste Management the correct way right now. They're paying likely more at operating their businesses, and we don't really have the magic bullet, even if they come in and tell you the story that they have about their business. So, at worst-case scenario, my hope was just to get consensus that you want me to start in outreach to folks about our ordinance, our requirements, and, and trying to, and trying to work with these residents to right-size. We are not going to cite them, we have not been citing them, that's been stopped a long time ago. At some point, we will need to decide, as a city, when to lift that order so that then we would then enforce it. So, but again, tonight is really just about bringing this back because it's been a long time coming. We didn't want to keep dragging this out, we wanted to bring it to you, and this is part of the solution, is making sure our two sections that talk about manure and self-haul are consistent and accurate. After that, it's really at your pleasure what you want staff to do. I'm ready to start and in a process, whatever you think that might be. I just can't predict when a public meeting will occur, that they can functionally be here in front of you to talk about their concerns.
Yeah, so if we, we can clean these up tonight and then come back later with a public meeting, let the people come in, just like they did for the egg ranch property.
Correct.
Because I remember when this came up before, there was a lot of people showed up and everything, and they're concerned, and they have a right to get up here and speak, so I have no problem if we just clean this up.
Mr. Mayor, do you have one other comment on this, if I can, this directed at you, John, and Randy? We have a contract with Waste Management. I mean, how much, I don't think Waste Management would do anything, but they could. Essentially, if we continue to allow these third-party haulers in violation of their contract, so, how much liability do we accept if we don't do anything at all?
We certainly have some contractual liability to Waste Management. You're right, to the extent that which they would take action to attempt to enforce it, who knows? I expect that they can put a dollar number on what it might cost them, but the, what I was going to say before you commented, that we're, we really can't blame this entirely on the existence of a contract. That's certainly true, but the issues that Andy commented on are significant issues for liability and for other reasons, that the performance bonding, that the general liability, workers' comp, those kinds of issues. Some way, I mean, even if we pretended that Waste Management is going to say, "Forget it, it's not worth the fight," we're going to have to figure some way, and this is really the issue, of treating third-party haulers the same way that we would any other franchisee. Essentially, we're granting baby franchises, because otherwise, I mean, maybe you've got the big, black haulers, but you also got, I can remember back in the old days, the guys doing it in their pickup trucks. There has to be some means of controlling, and we have to get credit for it. The, the complications related to, to Waste Management in general are so much more complicated than they were even five years ago, and the obligations of the city in terms of, of not only their liability, but accounting to the state for, and the impact of not accounting, all those things, it's a different ballgame entirely. And we're, have a difficult time allowing third-party haulers who don't meet all the standards and don't provide the information of hauling, even if Waste Management didn't have a problem with it. And, and that has to be a part of the, I think, the outreach as well, so that people understand it's not simply, "Oh, well, the statute says that we can contract for, to run an exclusive franchise. That's what municipal stuff works, and so we're stuck." It's the other issues that are now kind of related to that, that are just as significant as the contract issues.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I absolutely understand what you're saying, and in fact, we had a former council member here who was a pretty savvy guy in his day, but the truth of the matter is, he was a, from a dinosaur age, and he totally did not understand, and that's a smart guy, and nothing against him. But the reality is, is that explanation you just gave is something the public needs to hear, and I'm just, I thought the public was going to be engaged in this, and they haven't been.
But, again, I think that, I'll go back to the comment.
I, I do understand what you're trying to do, but the public should be here. They should understand that this, this process is, is we're trying to, it's, it is a new ballgame, so.
For, for example, I mean, I said this already once, but really, all you're doing tonight is cleaning up what amounts to ambiguous language in the code without changing anything. If we wanted to cite people today, we could cite people today under the code. That doesn't change. So, maybe, I mean, we don't know when the virus stuff is going to be gone and when we can have public meetings, but maybe there's a commitment on your part, whether Waste Management likes it or not, not to do anything until you have an opportunity to have a publicly noticed, public meeting, not to talk about the contract obligations, but to talk about the other issues and whether there are other solutions.
You want to make a...
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Still got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Would it be possible, and trying to also think with this motion, to continue this ordinance, let's just say, off calendar for now, but being aware of that, we're going to, I'm asking that you have a time schedule, a timeframe, you know, for your outreach, your internal controls, that, that whole program that you're going to develop, but, but these three concerns that Andy brought up about these outside haulers, okay, is there anything that, in our present ordinance, that we don't even know who they are at, at this point in time?
As outside haulers?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we know who they are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything in, in our ordinances today that would allow you to contact them and say, "You need to meet these three requirements"?
No, because currently, we don't allow third-party haulers. So, that's, that's, because we don't allow it per our contract.
Right.
There is nothing that would condition to allow that. That would be a, and that's one of the things we actually talked about in our subcommittee, was if we did it, what would it require logistically, how much staff, time it would cost to track all these third-party haulers, make sure of the right insurance, business license, you know, everything they're supposed to have, that they're turning in, all their, their tickets, et cetera, et cetera. How much administrative is that create, work for staff to, to follow what would likely be even more people once they hear, "Oh, you can do this." And then does it open Pandora's box for the other services, regular trash, recyclables?
Right.
We go down that road. So, right now, no, there's nothing in this ordinance and that would give indication that could be possible, what they would have to meet. One of the reasons I would like to get this passed tonight is really this helps, cleans up the paperwork, because people still can come today and get a self-haul permit. This program is still active, and by cleaning this up, this makes sure that, from this point going forward, that we have consistency and it's accurate, and, and so it doesn't change anything negatively for anybody. We're still not citing, and, and there's no end to that in sight at this point. We have no consensus yet about when we're going to allow us to cite again, you know, and because we haven't come up with the final plan. So, that I certainly welcome, I'm happy with delaying that part of it. Till we have more time, till we have more participation, that is no problem for me at all. But I wanted to bring this back because it's been so long, I want to at least say, "Here's what we've come up with, here was our discussion," and that the way the full council can say, "What do we want to do?" My hope is, at least, the bare bones was, that the, that the subcommittee term is, yes, do these fixes because it cleans it up. It doesn't mean we can't come back later on, if your discussions to change this again, to do some other program, to do some accommodations, but for right now, this at least helps me be accurate and consistent and clean when I'm giving a self-haul permit and people are coming to ask. I could say, "Here's the requirements, and here's the regulations, and they're consistent with each other." So, that's how it benefits us now.
I mean, one of the comments that you made that I was going to make, but you kind of jumped in a little ahead, and that really is the elephant in the room, is if we allow third-party haulers that meet these requirements, and we're happy, they're essentially baby franchisees, how does that affect the other types of services? What if a homeowners association comes to you and says, "Man, I can get this stuff cheaper." What if a block or five homes say, "Well, you know, we'll, we'll self-haul under this. We'll have that guy that you approved that's hauling manure, he'll, he's going to stop by our place and pick it up, and he's all good to go." Those are things we obviously can't do under the current contract or any municipal franchise contract, and, but are going to raise probably significant issues in the community. So, really, to think about, I mean, granted, manure is a slightly different subject and probably can be treated by itself, but there's going to have to be some real good reasons why we do that, and, and not that there aren't any, but, but if we had allowed third-party haulers, and there was no objection, there are real good reasons why we're doing that and why it shouldn't apply across the board.
Just to be clear, I want to, for Waste Management's benefit, this was not a Waste Management-generated issue. They did not identify this as a problem, they did not say they have an issue, they weren't calling me saying, "You've got people out there." This was our staff enforcing the municipal code, citing people per the municipal code that got residents upset, that started the discussion. And so, this is by no way or any shape, form, Waste Management is out there banging the door, saying, "The city's not doing what you're supposed to be doing." They've cooperated with us, they've participated, they've answered our questions, but this is definitely not something they're pushing on us, that we're not doing something.
This really, I think, in large part came from a cease and desist letter that I sent to...
The hauler.
Yeah, hauler, but what they do is manufacture or dry out and sell fertilizer, and that, this has been their source, and they're the ones that generated the excitement when they got letters saying, "We, you can't do this anymore because Norco was a principal source of their product, which they would sell to somebody else." They weren't waste haulers, they were fertilizer manufacturers.
Greg, did you want to make the motion? Ted?
I don't like it, but I'm going to. And I'll need to clean this thing up, because that's, I think, is our problem, is we clean this ordinance up. So, I will make a motion to approve this ordinance, but I will not agree to the effective date, 30 days.
We're not asking that, that's not part of this.
Okay, but that's part, it's in your resolution.
It's just, it's just information.
That's just the, when an ordinance becomes effective by statute. It's first reading, second reading, 30 days. But if you do nothing tonight, the, these rules are still in place today. The only reason they're not being enforced is because you've said, "Don't enforce it."
And that's what I'm saying, is it's not going to get enforced.
There's nothing here that says...
This doesn't change anything in terms of the legal application of this ordinance.
Yeah, there's no language in, in the ordinance that says that this rescinds anything as far as citations or anything, it just says that 30 days, this will be active.
No, but it does, it does, the 30 days, becomes effective 30 days.
Yeah, it's information, yeah, as far as the story.
That's what the statute requires. I mean, that's, that's when it's effective under the statute.
That's the only thing you're approving.
And effective only means that the language is changed from what it says today to what it says here, without having, changing the legal effect.
Okay, so make a motion to approve this Chapter 6.42 Municipal Refugees, Manure and Recycling Collection, and Chapter 6.45 City Manure Management Disposal Code Amendment 2020.5.
I'll second.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Norco, California, amending Norco Municipal Code, Chapter 6.42 Municipal Refugees, Manure and Recycling Collection, and Chapter 6.45 City of Norco Manure Management Disposal Code Amendment 2020-05.
And we'll vote. Councilmember Grumeyer? Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton? Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
No.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes with, Councilmember Newton, no, and Mayor Pro Tim Bash, no.
Okay, we'll move on to Item B, as Fiscal Year 2020, 2021 Measure R Budget Recommendations for Various Projects and Programs. This is the city manager and the finance director. Good evening, young lady, how are you doing?
Good, good evening, councilmembers. I'm here to provide the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee. They have reviewed the staff's recommendation budget request for the fiscal year 2021 Measure R request, and they're forwarding it... Year 2021 Measure R request, and they're forwarding it in order to get the projects approved by City Council for funding. On July 22, 2020, the COC approved the 2021 Measure R budget in the amount of 3.3 million for various operating expenditures and capital projects. COC recommends that City Council approve these recommended budgets that are listed on Attachment A. On the attachment, there's a couple of things I want to point out. When Measure R started the first year that the tax was implemented in April of 2018, the city earned 1.2 million for the first fiscal year, which began our fiscal year of 1920. With our projections of the 1920, we are projecting that our revenue earnings at year-end for 630 are 4.9 million, and our expenditures for the budget that was approved by council at 1.8 at year-end. This leaves us with about 4.3 million for 2021 projects. For 2021, estimated Measure R sales revenue to come in at 5.2 million is what we're estimating at this time, and in our projects, we do have our carryover projects that are not complete, we're estimating that about 2.5 million be completed this fiscal year coming up, and our current projects, our new projects for this fiscal year in the amount of 3.3 million. This would leave us with a fund balance of 3.6 million at the end of the fiscal year. Those are some of the items I've wanted to highlight for Measure R and the projects that are being brought to you. I would start with Chad to provide four details on the projects themselves.
So I only have a couple. Brian's going to get most of this.
So the first project for me is related to the existing trail rehabilitation project. That's the one you authorized last year where we're going through and rehabilitating all the trails. Part of that discussion at the time, part of our contract, was we elected to pull out the purchase and of purchasing DG for the project. So we buy it ourselves and provide it to the contractor as needed, because the projected amounts of DG was varying based off of the proposals. So we simply decided, based off of costs that was proposed, that we'll just do it ourselves. Based off of that, we think the total amount that's going to be needed to complete the work is under $50,000 for the entire work. It hasn't needed as much as we thought it would. So we're budgeting and seeking an additional $50,000 for Measure R on top of the $5,000 that Measure R already authorized to conduct the specific work. So this is just our portion to make sure we don't pull the needed funds from Measure R for the project from the contractor. This will cover our portion for that first year, first phase of this project, which we anticipate will probably be done by around end of November at this pace. The contract will be done with the work, and then we'll come back with you with another discussion about year two or year three as far as how we want to do a maintenance, continue maintenance on the trail system. Because as you recall, we only approved one year of the contract to do the initial work. So this is the $50,000 we're looking for for Measure R in addition to the $500 already authorized to cover the DG that the city's providing. Second one I have here is for trail fencing replacement. Again, we want to continue on with the trail fence project. We're asking for basically double the amount that we've done in previous years. We're initially going to go for 250,000, but we decided to do 500,000 because we're getting quite a bit done. It looks really nice out there, a lot of the work, Sixth Street, nearly 100% finished, looks really good, and we have a lot of other streets that we would like to continue on. We've reviewed those streets with the Streets and Trails Utilities Commission, and these are some of the streets that we are looking to accomplish, and which is Corona, I won't read them off all to you, but they're there, plus a second sheet of locations. All these locations we're looking to do, and I have determined at this time, we project that all these locations can be completed within the $500,000 funding based off of existing proposals that we've gotten in the last two contracts, including removal of all the fencing that's out there. Because that's one of the key issues we've been hit with, with the COVID-19, is we don't have any of our crews that normally would use to try to pull the fencing, and it's a lot, lot cheaper. In this next contract, we will have in there an alternate item in there for the contractors to provide removal of the fencing, because it's nearly 19,000 linear feet of fencing to remove, and installation, we projected it's about 24,000 linear feet of fencing to install. But we believe we can get it all done with the 500,000. Ultimately, that will depend on the bids that come in, but if they're consistent, what we've gotten in the past, and my estimates were a little heavy, we should be able to get all this done with the money if it's granted, as Measure R has supported by the council tonight. Any questions on any of those two items? Yes, sir.
Would it be possible, Chad, on the trail rehab, to give us a, like a physical update, a little map of what, where we are, what trails have been completed, where they're working presently, and what's remaining?
I'd have to work on a map that kind of shows what they've done. They're about 70% done, maybe 75, if my numbers recall correctly, and I'm not sure where they're working. They usually have multiple crews work in different areas, so I couldn't tell you where they're working now. But we can try to work on something that kind of gives you.
I think a little map would.
Of what they've done, works as what they still have to complete, yeah.
Appreciate it.
We can work on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else got anything?
Chad, on your list, the trail fence replacement, and I know it's, this is a sore subject. Hidden Valley, Norco Hills Drive, I know that's LMD-2, but somehow or another, LMD-2 is not going to pay for that fence, I mean, just bottom line. But that is an entrance way into our city along Hidden Valley, and half that fence is gone, the other half is so paper thin, it should be gone in the next Santa Ana. So I would really like to see us look at that area. Like I said, and Brian, I'll back, there's no money there for them to replace that fence, and there's not going to be for at least 10 years. Those people up there, and I, this is a question, so I think we need to look at that area over there, because aesthetically, it looks, it's bad. Thank you.
I have a question. So what's the timeline on some of the other, the older streets? I mean, I hate to say it, Pedley between Fifth and Eighth, Hillside, I mean, those are streets where the fencing was put in before Fifth to Branding Iron, to Branding Iron from Pedley to Dapple Gray was even built. The fencing was put in, that's there now, was put in prior to that. Do we have any plans for the older streets between Fifth and Sixth?
Honestly, the, my original plan in the last couple of years in selecting locations is, is the areas where we've recently completed the street work. So we kind of get a complete street. The street's now done and clean, we've got nice new fencing. Now we're getting beyond that. We've gotten almost all the streets that have been redone, Corona and Temescal Avenue, Corona Fourth, Fourth Street to Fifth Street, Temescal Avenue, Fourth Street to Fifth Street, and Corona from Second to First are the three remaining streets that have been repaved, that don't have new fencing. After that, it's really, it's been, it's been our commission picking locations that they think where fencing should go. So right now, it's, we can do any location you want to do. There's so much to be done. It's in.
I would, I would like you to look at, and I hate to mention my street, but California, Pedley, Hillside, Temescal, again, all those, all that fencing was put in before those houses were built, and that fencing doesn't look bad. That's why, I mean, it doesn't look bad.
Yeah, well, Pedley, most of Pedley's been finished now, at least from the river all the way to.
I'm not even talking about Pedley, I'm talking about California.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said Pedley, so I was wondering.
I said Pedley, yeah, but I mean, I don't want to, because I live on the street, but it would just seem, there's like five streets in a row between Fifth and Sixth that maybe, maybe the commission can look at, Streets and Trails.
And California, as you know, is, from Six to North is done. Now we're looking to go the other side of California on this list. So there's two lists here, so I apologize.
Yeah, and that's good, that's good.
So we're trying to complete that. Even your street that you live on, Pedley, I have a bigger picture plan. I'd like to rehab that whole trail because it's an optimal trail to engineer.
I'm actually more, I'm more concerned about Hillside, Temescal, those. And then my second thing is, is I would, I would recommend to council that, at the issues that we've had, we have, we have to make a decision, I think, as a council. Are we going to, as we've done in the hills, put trees in the parkway? And in doing that, I mean, I know they're running into impediments all along the different streets. As much as we're an equestrian community, our community never had pre-planned trails. They just were invented. And basically, what happened is people like my parents gave up all the land from, as long as there's a trail, they owned all the land of the middle of the street. Once the trails happened, and that was sort of taken away. So are we going to have trees as they are now in the right of way, which actually, when most of the trees were planted, that was people's property? Or are we going to erase all of those and put it in the parkway? And I think that's a decision we have to make as a council. And I think we need to do it lickety-split, because we're doing trails right now. And I think we need to decide in 10 years down the line, where are the trees going to go? Are we going to have people plant them just on their property, and then have them, then we go through? Because I don't see how financially, or just width of a street, how we're ever going to be able to plant a bunch of trees in the parkway. I just don't see it. I also, as I look it up in the hills where they're in the parkway, a lot of those are very invasive roots. Eventually, it's going to start cracking the concrete. Do we want to pre-plan that in the flatlands? So I think, I recommend, we have a council meeting where we talk about what exactly you're dealing with, because you're, I mean, the trails look beautiful, the one in front of my house is A1, but, but I had to move everything back. And, and I did it to set an example.
Did a good job.
Thank you very much. It almost killed me, I'm an old man. But my point is, is I think we need to have a meeting and decide, because it's going to help you, and then we begin to find out what residents want, because there's people already, as you know, that are upset, that they're, I mean, some of the things are pretty dubious, but there's some people that, like on my street, that if you start cutting that stuff away, it's going to be a big deal. So I just think we need to make a decision, where are we going to put the trees eventually?
Yeah, to that, to that question, one of the things we plan to do, once the maintenance, first year of the maintenance contract is done, is come back to you and talk about that very issue of encroachments and trees. Right now, we're not taking things out that are not, that are more hardened and physical. If there's low-lined grass, I mean, we will remove that to clean up the trail, but most items that are impediments, we are documenting. So that we come back to you and give you the daunting list of just how many encroachments, impediments we have, which is the trees, which is hydrants, telephone pole, it's everything. But I mean, right now, we're focusing on the physical encroachments that have narrowed our trails, to have that discussion about how you want me to address that, because obviously you know that's going to be a big discussion amongst this community.
And it's something, because I'm sure Robin remembers, before the lerpasillus, all the, and before all the pepper trees started to die, and Edison cut them off, and I'm sure you remember too. I mean, Norco had a beautiful urban forest, and just, it's aged out and that kind of stuff. So do we want to try to replicate that, or are we going to do something totally different? I don't know. Anyway, I just think that the sooner we have that discussion, the better.
Robin, do you have anything? Okay, I guess we need a motion.
This is Brian's. Now Brian's going to go through his projects. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. This first project is the next parking lot allotment that we're doing. Animal Control, Parmano Park, and Wayne Macon, we've evaluated these parking lots. They're next on our list for improvements, and we would be, based on this, and the engineers' evaluations, this is what he came back with for us for rehabilitation of these particular three different parking lots. Riley Gym Improvements, we've, we've added a new floor to the gymnasium, we have a new roof on the gymnasium. The next steps would be to deal with the installation, which has been an issue, and we would actually bring and have an engineer coming in. We've actually have, actually had discussions with two different engineers related to mechanical to try and come up with a better solution that's cost-effective in regards to what we have existing right now. And so part of that would be redoing the installation in the gymnasium, interior renovations, which would include painting and, and fixing our backboards, our curtain, then also adding security, and our smoke detection system within the gymnasium, updating that, and then painting is part of that, and then an interior sign. Pool demolition, the pool itself is an attractive nuisance. It is becoming a problem for us, both not only from our department, cutting of the fence, items going on that are people partying, breaking bottles in there, doing all kinds of illegal activity, but most recently, we've had groups in there, from, all the way from Los Angeles, in there trying to skew it as a skate facility, and the sheriffs had to, or having to assist us in running people out of there. The pool, at this point, cannot be rehabilitated. It would not meet any type of codes to be able to do that. At this point, we are recommending that it be demolished and removed from the site.
Tennis court next to it, too?
It does not. The tennis court, as you know, it is in bad shape. It probably should be replaced as well. The following fiscal year, we've talked with our commission, we've talked about looking at possibly, looking at the community center as a whole and its amenities. We've looked at the community center, I've even maybe addressing some of the issues that the historical society has, looking at an additional wing, we've looked at, how can we, maybe in this area where we demo, we could maybe have a splash pad, maybe put an outdoor basketball courts, things that would have a good use next to the gymnasium, which has over 85,000 people annually attending it, so, for activities. So we feel that there's some things that could be done, more of a master plan process related to the community center, and that's something we would look at in the following fiscal year. The Event Center pole barns, I'm going to skip this because I want to come back, I want to show you some other slides, but in our request here, we came up with about 1.6, almost 1.1 million dollars for replacement of the pole barns. The pole barns have, are basically on their last stages, and we're at a point where they are deteriorating to the point where they're going to be condemned and torn down, regardless of whatever we do, that, that, we're approaching that. The poles have, a lot of that was built in the very early 70s, a lot of it was from materials that have been around for a long time. It's just no longer feasible to keep them in the, the way they are. So we've been working very closely with our FFA 4H groups, our staff, our subcommittees, to talk about what we need to do there. We've come up with a footprint for replacement of the pole barns that also create additional uses. So it's not just for animal exhibitions and activities, but also provides for potential rentals or expansion of community use within that, those pole barns. Pretty much what we've identified in here is how we arrived at the 1.1 million dollars almost, and this would also, in that area, would include the additions of restrooms and storage. So, and to do this site, we would be having to run new sewer and storm drain into this site to collect water runoff. Also, we would have to have built-in, particularly on the animal keeping, we're going to have to have collectors, and clarifiers to, before anything gets washed off or goes into storm drain. That's going to, that is a requirement. Also, we'll have to run line. Also, we'll have to run line. The nearest storm drain, or I'm sorry, sewer for us is in the major service road that runs between the upper arenas and animal control there, down that major service road. That is the closest sewer line to this location. I do have a little site map that I want to show you. Let me get through it, and then I'll come to that particular slide for you guys, just to show you what we've been conceptually talking about. Nellie Weaver Hall improvements. This includes also our insulation issue there. It is made up of the, sort of the similar same insulation that was in Riley Gym, which is a paper insulation. You can't even do that anymore. So we would be looking, again, consulting and doing some sort of a battening in between the rafters is what we feel would be the most effective and most cost-effective type of insulation. Replacing of the stage door, electrical pedestals in the front. At one time, that was where the fair had, and that's why those were there. The fair is all upstairs. Right now, it is a problem when we have events or activities or community activities at Nellie Weaver Hall, the pedestals are in the way. In fact, they, it's pretty common that someone hits them and knocks them over, and we got to stand them back up. So really cleaning that up and really making a real viable parking area with handicap is part of that process. And also, would be part of the parking lot and drainage that we've identified in that. And so, giving it really kind of a refresh from the outside, repainting the facility, removing some of our dry rot that we have and termite problems that we've had where in some of our wood areas, we've actually lost some of the integrity of the wood. We would be replacing that. And that would be part of this particular project here. Then, Marino Arena sound system. We're over 20 years old in that sound system. That sound system needs a refreshing. So we want to work with our subcommittee to actually look at engineering and replacing that sound system. At this point in time, some of our existing rack equipment, I think, is all viable and user, could be reused. But there are certain elements of our speakers. The technology that we want to go is night and day from when we first originally put those in. So I really think we can put a more effective system in there than what we actually have right now, which has its problems and has pretty much lived its life expectancy. Off-field sports lighting during the winds, and the reason why it doesn't even come back sooner is those facilities have been shut down, and I took the poles out. But we've had three poles fall down during wind. So I had poles inspected throughout the city for their integrity, when they were actually put in, and this. So basically, we're in pretty good shape based on that evaluation. However, these three poles are gone. The issue at this site, which is Clark and Community Center, is that we're going to be bringing kids back to play and practice at some point. Lights are going to be a needed resource. And currently, right now, the way it stands, I can't light those fields properly to be able to have kids go out there and play. So this would be the replacement of three of our poles. Those would go into, we would actually be adding LED. We just did a survey for that. This would actually give us, coming in upcoming fiscal years, to do a program where we start replacing all of the old fixtures and going LED everywhere. Sports lighting and LED has come so far. This would actually be a good infrastructure item for us, plus it would save money in the long run. This is a summary of the various projects that I've outlined tonight. And Matt, can you show that other slide for me real quick? So the pole barn project, I wanted to give you a little bit of an update at it. Basically, when we had, when we started meeting with our community, some of the groups that use it, our staff, you know, this facility, if it was replaced, we're looking at one large facility. It allows us, as opposed to three different facilities, it allows us to be able to attract junior livestock, 4H youth, provide multipurpose facility for community and private events to host educational opportunities which focus on youth and agriculture. It's a showcase facility for community events, i.e. the fair. It also provides, based on what we're looking at in design, to allow us to be able to do anything from a dog show to a wedding, outdoor wedding reception, wedding, to the reception at Nellie Weaver Hall. So it brings the connection there. It gives us ability to do several different things that would be more conducive to what we need today versus the facility that was built, you know, 40-plus years ago. The facility provides for the protection of animals from the elements and other dangers in the facility that we are looking at to build. It provides for emergency small livestock housing during emergency conditions for evacuation. The new facility will add a gorgeous visual interest to the property and provide a venue to generate additional revenue. I really believe it also, the way we're looking at this, is build something that stays within our character of our community as well. We're looking at a steel construction, a concrete floor. It would have electrical, it would have drainage, it would have a lot of amenities that would allow us to have activities, exhibits, and bring in other events and venues throughout the year. Discussions have been also related to the wind that we get, the sun, and how it rises and how it sets to the facility. So our groups have been talking about that. Do we do siding? Do we do some sort of type of screens that come down? So all of those are part of the discussion. Right now, we need to move forward with design. If I was to be ready for the fair next year, we need to get the design completed, get it out, get it to bid, so that I could be in construction by the end of the year. This is one of our top projects to do, just because I can't tell you if the barns will be here next year anyway, based on the conditions of, the existing conditions of them. So this is a site plan of the whole facility. It kind of gives you a perspective here. This is to the north, and this is to the south. I'm trying to find it, but I think it's right about right here, where here is our sewer manhole. Our sewer runs all the way up here. We run laterals here and back to here, to that main. So if we were to build restrooms, which is what we're talking about in storage facilities for all of the equipment, the sewer lines would have to run back here, all the way this way. There is no sewer lines in 6th Street. But what we're looking at is approximately 15,000 square feet or a little more, and that would incorporate the actual exhibition site, not to include the restrooms and storage facilities. It would be redoing this whole site, creating a venue that also would be conducive for the various events we would like to bring in or attract in a pole barn type situation. This is, we've already completed area topo on the site, so we've already have managed the engineering to the site. So the next steps for us, and working with this and our different groups and the community, is to really get into the design, get this out. We're looking at the option of a design-build type feature on this, which would be very acceptable to these sort of prefabricated type of facilities. There is a lot of site work that would need done, civil work, so that would be included in our estimating. This is just a picture of an example of how it could be set up. If you had sidewalls, what you could do with openings and various things. So those are all, this is all part of the discussion. Right now, because of cost, we're not sure that walls would be, but we would want to do something on the sides to reduce, one, wind and reduce the potential of the, where the sun rises and the sun sets at this site. We'd also be looking at the landscaping in this whole area of redoing that to make it more attractive. And just kind of, the idea and concept that we've been looking at is the Montier or the type of barn, this type of barn. One, we think from a construction standpoint, we can meet our needs, but yet also be cost-effective in that. And I gave you this picture only because it's the what-if. You can facade things, you can give a different feel and a look that likes it be very opening to be able to offer a reception. We have done some outdoor weddings up there. It's very challenging with not a solid floor. It does make it more attractive when you put a solid floor in. It does allow us to be able to do a lot of different things to the facility, including some of our agility dog shows would be able to compete in that size facility. And we've actually have talked to our dog show people, who have said most certainly they would rent the facility. And that concludes my presentation. And conceptually, don't get hooked into what I am, because I still got to go back and work to, with the committee. The key for me is to get this project moving. Get RKA onboard to get into design, because we need to get moving on this if we would like to have this built. And my objective would be have an opening by August of 2021. So with that, I'll conclude the projects and answer any questions. Matt, can you go back to the original C, Measure R slide?
Brian?
Uh-huh.
How big did you say that pole barn was going to be?
Right now, we'd be looking at at least 15,000 square feet.
Okay, how big are the ones that are up there?
Right now, we're a little bit, the footprint is almost the same if you count the gaps in between. So in between each barn you have existing, you have a dirt space in between. So if you looked at that whole footprint, you'd come up with almost 15,000 to closer to 20,000 square feet.
But we'd get rid of all that mess and just have one building up there?
One building, yes, sir.
Okay.
And that building would be designed so that we are able to attract various activities. Our facility supervisor's been engaged in the process of, what do you need to use this on weekends and things that, when there's nothing going on? And so, that's been part of our discussion, you know, bringing power and being able to draw power out of the ceiling versus drawing a draw, run extension cords everywhere. Drainage, having the ability, when we put in, if we have a livestock exhibition, let's say we have pigs, we can't have, being able to have sleeves in the ground where we can set up our pens and be able to station them so the pigs don't move them around. Being able to come up with a design that allows us the flexibility of creating an exhibition facility, but then turn around and let it have the ability that you could have an outdoor wedding or a reception in there, or a public meeting providing outdoor and airflow.
That's, that's why you'd need a solid floor in there then.
Yes, sir. Yep.
Okay. Anybody else? Ted?
On the pole barns, I like the concept, just so you know. But take a look at Lancaster, the Antelope Valley Fairgrounds, the Van Damme Building, beautiful setup like that. And then, Industry Hills with your, when you're out. Your facade up front?
Yeah.
Industry Hills, you look in the front, it's a cool facade, and you go in the back, it's a tent. But it looks good.
Okay.
Anyway.
No, those are good things, and we can most certainly do.
But my question to you on the Nellie Weaver Hall improvements?
Uh-huh.
Are there any improvements for lights in that parking lot? Brian? You're fixing the parking lot, the lights are terrible.
Yeah. Part of this is, we have some money in there for an assessment. So we're going to look at both the inside and the outside and that. But when I'm doing the, redoing the electrical, that can be part of the process.
Okay.
I agree with you. We only have two floodlights out there. You're right. It's not adequate.
It's bad. And, well, if you're going to improve the parking lot, maybe the lights won't bad, because you won't trip over anything.
Part of this money is also, we would be basically removing all old electrical in that area, and we'd be putting all new backbone. That'd be the perfect time to add certain lights.
Well, when you go in there, because I was over there the other day, by the way, for those who don't know, we no longer have a jail there. It, the termites decided to move it. Anyway, the sound booth for the old Ted Nairmore auditorium bleachers there, I don't know what you call it now, the amphitheater in the back, you might want to look at that. About fills with the floor of the sound booth. And the electrical, and Greg, you get a kick out of this. If you went back there in the back with the electrical and the sound booth goes back and goes to the floor for their junction box, somebody put a fishing tackle, a plastic fishing tackle box, this is the cover, that's where all the cables go into. So the thing hasn't been used in years, but you all, you need to look at it.
Okay.
So, okay. If you're going to be in there.
We'll make that part of our electrical assessment.
Thank you.
I have a couple of basic questions. So, staff advises Measure R that comes to council. I'm wondering at some point if we can go council to staff to Measure R. And the reason I say that is that, one of the things for me that's missing from all of this is there's no economic development really at all. It's all public improvements. I like them all, I do have considerations, but I'm not seeing any public, I'm seeing public improvement, which is important. But given the obstacles we're experiencing now and the things that I anticipate we will be experiencing, I have concerns that we're not looking realistically at what we're about to face as a state and a city. I'm really concerned. I know we kind of joke about it, but I realize we got to put money into Riley Gym and a lot of those things. I was on the commission when we approved them. But I still feel like what we should have done is we should have seriously looked at that corner and redone it. I think that that gym is old. I think now we're talking about fixing the scout house. I think we could have consolidated something, and we probably, I believe we could have found the funding maybe to do it. Looks like we've gone past that. But that is a corner in which, let's face it, we have, as you've said, Brian, we have 85,000 people a year that go into that building.
That's correct.
And we capture no money. We can only charge what the program costs. We're now going to put $3 million and do only what the going rate will allow us to charge. That's a lot of friggin' money. One of the things that, if I approve the pole barns, which I totally love, but right now, they're used four weeks a year. And that's it. We have no means whatsoever to really capture putting something into them. So what I would, what I really think needs to happen is, we need to understand that we need to help our current person that's booking that. We need to hire somebody. Because we're being irresponsible, spending over a million dollars on pole barns for three and a half, four weeks. If we don't put into place at the same time, the means to bring in the weddings, to bring in all those things. And I think we can do it, but I think we're going to have to hire somebody. Otherwise, a million dollars for three and a half weeks?
Well.
So, so I just think, Brian, and I'm going to support it, but I want to see a staffer that, I want to see that sucker book six, seven, eight, nine months out of a year.
The key to what we're trying to do as a group is design it so it's not three or four weeks.
I get it, but as we've discussed, we need to have a staffer.
But I would not disagree with you. To really lift it to that level is something that we need to have as that process as we go into next year's budget workshops.
And I just, I just feel that the next group of stuff I see, I want to see economic development. And I totally get, no, the pool has to go. I totally get all that stuff. But not one thing on this list is going to generate, it'll generate public pride, it'll generate use for the public, it'll do all those things. But ultimately, we need to be developing, continuing developing a diversified income stream to protect our city's economy and our lifestyle. I intend to support all these things, but Andy, we've got to have some staffers to book this stuff. And again, I believe we are totally missing an opportunity surrounding the community center. I think, I think it's a, I'm going to support it, but it's a mistake to be putting money into that gym. We should have stopped that two years ago. And we just should have built a new gym, a bigger one, in which we could have figured out a master plan for the entire community center. And I just really, it really bothers me that we just didn't do that. So, again, I'm going to support all of it. I think it's important. But by January, February, I want to see a plan for how we're going to utilize this, this other than, and trust me, there's nobody more supportive, nor supportive of the FFA. But for a building that essentially can sit empty, I really want to see, find a plan for making use of it. And Brian, you're the guy I know that can do it, okay? That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment, on the economic side of it, and at the community center, I don't disagree that footprint in there. I don't disagree that footprint in there, but that was one of the comments and discussions is that perhaps in the following year, we need to, remember, we didn't have any money until last year to even do anything. And so a lot of our money has been spent on trying to rehabilitate and bring certain elements just that were broken, fit to fix them. If we're going to look at the community center, Kevin, I think you can master plan that. You can talk about all of the various functionalities and how can you make that Hamner forefront right there, make it more user friendly? And I think that's something in this next fiscal year process that we look at. How do we look at that whole corner? What can that be using existing facilities, dressing existing facilities up? That's part of master plan. And that's probably, if we're going to do it, then that's the way we should look at those type of plans.
Yeah, and I think in the future, and I don't know why this happened, I think that it needs to go from council to staff to measure R. And I think the reason we did that.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, yeah.
That is the way it's intended to operate. The process we have now, I believe, works if the council, any one of members of the city council can provide attention to staff in terms of projects we need to look at. And we'll put an assessment process in that and through the measure R. We work together. And now I think the development part goes through staff and then COC reviews these projects in their capacity as intended. And then we're ready to bring it back to the city council. Doesn't stop you as a city council, even as we sit here today, to see there's additional projects we want you to go take a look at. And you can go back, take a look at it. Process and.
Yeah, and I totally understand that. And I sit there and I look at a Hamner Avenue front, and I've mentioned it now almost three and a half years. I've been saying, I said, that gymnasium, I know it well, is falling apart. And I just felt that we should have really addressed that. Now we've put so much money into it, we can't move forward. Realistically, we're looking at Ingalls Park. It is an enclosed facility. It's not a facility that the public can go to or come back and forth to, whereas there's other places in the city where people come and go. And just in terms of economic viability, it would just seem to me, I would just, and I'm not criticizing anyone, these are all, these are fabulous projects. I mean, what sold me, Brian, was when I saw the picture. I went, whoa, that could be really cool. But I want to make sure that it's not sitting empty, that's all. So that it is useful to the public that we are able to do certain things with it. But we have been and sat with councils that didn't get, they had to make money, and we almost went bankrupt because we had one funding source. And I think we just need to, if I can, suggest that we need to consider expanding as many funding sources to the city of Norco as possible. And that's, that's, it's pretty, it's simple, as simple as that. So thank you very much. I don't want to go on and on.
Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll go ahead and speak to a couple of things. The first one is the pole barns. When we talk about the pole barns and economic development, I think they go together. When we were pre-COVID, staff had events going on up at Ingalls Park very, very consistently. The fact is, like a dog show, for example, it's a very specific footprint that they need, and those dog shows are pretty large when they come to town. And so a couple of things. Number one, the facility, if it goes as designed, could be dog shows, trade shows, large banquets. And we're talking about facilities that are not available regionally and that is going to bring people in to our area. So it's not about four weeks. I kind of have the feeling if you build it, they will come because it's going to be the only thing like it in the area. And there are groups that if you want to have a nice sit-down banquet that exceeds 100 people, you're out of luck in this area. And so this can potentially meet that need. When we look at some of the extended events, like livestock shows and things like that, and even the single day things, you're looking at restaurants being frequented, hotels being stayed at. So I would argue that if this is done correctly, and I know it will be, that it is going to be a revenue generator. Is it going to take the whole event center and bring it up out of, you know, where it's operating at now? No. Does it have the potential to at some point in time? Yes. The other thing I would bring up about as far as the economic development and the use of facilities is we have an event center that essentially has two arenas, the barns, Nellie Weaver Hall, all of the Veterans Memorial. If we were in the private sector, that would be four different people booking those four different places, and we have one person doing all the booking. So I think we need to look at it, you know, with the fact that you have one person working their tail off to keep an event center running and booked and working. Nellie Weaver Hall, pre-COVID, if you wanted it for a weekend, it was highly likely you wouldn't be able to get it because it's booked. So, you know, I think making investments that are, yes, public improvements and are going to make our community proud are very important, but they're, they're revenue generators as well, maybe not for, you know, us directly, but definitely for our restaurants, our hotels, all of those different things. And, and yeah, it's a lot of money because things have been neglected. Nothing's been done in that specific area since when it was built in the 70s. And any small repairs or anything that's been done has been done by the groups that use that area, period. And so, yeah, it's a big chunk of change right now, but that's our fault for letting it sit for that long with no maintenance or replacement or anything else. So I think it's an, I know it's an important project, and it's not just because, you know, people say, well, Robin, you run the livestock show and there's one week of the year that it's used. Absolutely. I live up there for that seven days or whatever it is. But again, when we look at the big picture, and again, I go back to, we have one person booking, but I can foresee in the future, once all the COVID stuff is, you have two arenas running, you have a barn running, you have Nellie Weaver Hall running, and it's going to be crazy busy in a fully operating event center that all of those people are going to be at our restaurants, those people are going to be staying at our hotels. And it, again, I just see potential once we get beyond where we're at now and all the improvements are made and the facilities are to a level that they need to be. There's the potential for it to be a showcase in the Empire and people to come here and be here, and it's the place where people will want to have their events. So I'm super excited about what you have planned, and I think it has a ton of potential. And thank you for bringing them forward.
Respond. I absolutely agree with her. I absolutely agree with you. But as our discussion was, we don't have, what we're going to need tandem with this is the staff. And I think we, as a council, need to absolutely plan for that so that when this opens, we have more than just one person doing the booking. And I think that's really, really important if we're going to capture that right out of the gate. Otherwise, I mean, I think it's, I think it's a great project. I absolutely agree with you. I just want to make sure, because right now, you can't do any of that. You can build that, and you don't have the people to book any of it. And what needs to happen is we're going to have to, we're going to have to hire somebody to help to facilitate all that, probably bring in a professional, somebody to help Patty who works her butt off. So you and I are totally, we're totally in agreement, Robin. We just need more people over there.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Overall, I approve most of these, with these projects. Kevin, I do agree with you on your earlier comments about the community center. I think early on, I made some comments when we were talking about, you know, redoing the flooring and redoing the roofing and, but that was not the direction we chose to take at that time. But kind of bringing this all back, this is all measure R. So I think my gut feeling is, you know, the residents passed measure R, streets and trails, number one. That's what they wanted to see. Get the trails dialed in, let's get streets repaired. And Chad's been making good progress on that. And then after that was building infrastructure. And so we're starting to make some gains in that area, but I, I guess with your comment about economic development, all of these do have a economic impact ever so slightly. And just taking a small one, like say Marino Arena, hell, it took us 15 years just to get paint on the steel. We just, we're great at ignoring things, okay? And so then I look at the sound system that, at that same time, that was Hal Clark and Mike Montgomery stringing wire up in that steel, trying to get it ready for Horse Week 18, 19 years ago. So I don't think you can attract decent events unless you spend the money, let's say, on a sound system. So there's some, there's an economic driver there. It's just a smaller component. So, I mean, I'm agreeing with what you're saying, but I think all of these do have an economic benefit. That's all I have to say, Mayor.
Well, a lot of those people got to where they brought their own sound system.
Yeah.
You know, because when they first put that in there, and you remember, Brian, I came to council and accused you guys of spending $99 at Radio Shack for a sound system. And that's just, that's just about what it sounded like. But I see because they strung the wire up there and they did it in a big hurry to get Horse Week going and didn't even have a fence around there.
Right.
They had to bring in fences and stuff, but I'm glad to see you're improving that and everything. So we look for a motion here for.
I have one more, one more thing. And if there's any, but Brian, and I'm looking at your list, I'm going to pick on you because you already know I'm going to do this. You look at your carryover projects, and one of the things that, and this came from some trail riders and people that are all the time down there, and they asked me about it, the causeway. We about got some nice trails situated, and I know there's some trail riders that have been working with Todd and gone through, they showed him how we had to fix the trail. But that causeway is a stumbling block, and we need to unstumble it. Just, basically, we set aside that money last year, it's still sitting there. I know the pole barns are priority, guaranteed that.
Right.
Because of time. But we got to quit pushing that other one back.
Yeah, and we've got preliminary design. We're going to have to now take that and get into the final construction documents. This particular project will also require us to have a discussion with JCSD and regarding an MOU between the two properties as well, and perhaps Silver Lake as a, as all, a three-party situation there for us to really make the full connection of the trail.
Okay. And then the other thing, back to the park. If you haven't been up there lately, because I have, because without coworkers, there's a few that are the FTVs of the city, and I'll explain to you sometime, but take a look at what Todd has done and his crews have done up there without events, the improvements. I think you'll be surprised. You drive in there, yes, it's grinding, and thank you very much, but it's smooth. You're not going to rattle your, your trailer driving in there now, at least through Gate One. The drains are in. We don't have to worry about the water flooding Marino Arena because they finally put drains in. So things are happening. And so this is, Kevin, you talk about the infrastructure and the economic development. I've seen Patty's list. Patty's list before COVID was done two years ahead of time for that park and everything to include Nellie Weaver, to include, and you talk about economic drivers. When these dog shows are not, and dog shows are so easy for us, it's a good money maker. They're coming from Long Beach and out of LA because they don't have that facility. And they're coming out here in their motorhomes, they're parking out here, and they're staying over the weekend, they're using, they're coming out stores, so they're there. And Patty has always said, if she had a place to put them, right now they're at Pike's Peak Park, the grass. And when it wind blows, they can't be in there. They moved into Marino, and it's an easy thing, two-day dog show going into Clark. So, but if you look at what's been going on up there, Brian and his staff have really been doing a good job. And so these things are going to take time and the improvement. So, but I just, I got to pick on you on the causeway because that needs to get done. That's the other part that we owe our residents is to get those trails opened up. Thank you.
You know, I'll make a motion, but in just a second. You know, don't get me wrong, part of the reason improvements didn't happen, I started out as a parkland commissioner in 1997 when we had no money, nothing. And I'm well aware of the things that need to be done there, and I'm delighted that we have the money. I just want to make sure that we, and you make a very good point in that measure R is for public improvements. That's a good point. I just want to make sure that when we run this thing, I'd like to make sure we have staff that can really do it. Patty does a great job, and I would totally support, you know, having one other person there to assist her. I think that would really be helpful. So I make a motion that we approve everything as presented by staff.
I'll second.
We had no public comment on this item tonight.
Thank you.
Counsel member Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Counsel member Hoffman?
Yes.
Counsel member Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, item seven is public hearings. First one is staff presentation. Council questions of staff, open the public hearing. Public speakers in favor, against, or neutral, close the public hearing. Council discussion in action. So item A is confirming the report of cost for abatement of weeds and hazardous vegetation as a public nuisance and imposing special assessment liens on vacant parcels within the city. The battalion chief, you going to be the battalion chief tonight, Andy?
Well, the fire chief is on vacation this week, so I get to do a brief staff report on this. As you pointed out, this is an item for the city council to confirm the cost of doing the abatement for spring weeds. The process starts by the fire department notifying property owners of the need for them to abate weeds on their vacant parcel. And those notices were mailed out on March 2nd, 2020. Property owners had until April 5th to comply. And then on April 6th, inspections began, and the lots that fell those inspections were, first of all, received a $250 administrative citation. And then subsequent to that, the fire department uses their contractor to go ahead and abate the weed. And the cost of abating those weeds have been outlined in the schedule that is attached to the staff report. And in addition to the act, the cost of abating the weeds, the city also adds the same amount as administrative fee for those property owners. After you take this action tonight, the invoices will be mailed out to the property owners. And for those property owners that fell to pay for the invoices, those invoices will become a lien on their property. Total of 18 parcels that fell inspection, four property owners were able to do the abatement on their own prior to the deadline and contractor had to go out and do abatement on 14 parcels. One thing I do want to point out that except for one property owner, all the other owners of the remaining 13 parcels are out of town property owners. Asking for your approval to go ahead and. Asking for your approval to go ahead and mail out the invoices to this.
Christians, comments? Have any public, did you have a hand up, Greg? Oh, have any cards?
We have no public comments.
Okay, then we'll, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back. Does anybody want to make a motion? Second.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Okay, item eight, city council, city manager, staff, communications. Kevin, we'll start with you first.
Yeah, I just had a very quick thing. I'm hoping, I can't remember, Brian, what was it, we were going to have a discussion on Norco Hills Road, were we going to wait until we began to do the, the process of seeing if they'll vote in a tax increase, or are we going to discuss that first?
What Councilman Bash is talking about is, it's something that's been in the discussion, which is, our issue concerning right now, we don't have crews citywide related to weeds. And we may have to look at coming back to the council and coming up with a plan where we're contracting out under our existing contracts to remove this vegetation or these weeds.
On Norco Hills Road?
On Norco Hills Road, it's a little different, because that's in an assessment district.
Right.
The assessment does not have the, the funding to do so.
Right.
In our recent inspection with the fire chief, he has told us that the, that vegetation that is now dyed needs to be modified, meaning that it can stay, but it has to be modified, meaning it has to be cut down to no more than six to eight inches, and we need to, or it needs to be removed. So, there's two ways that has to happen, either we're going to pay for that out of the general fund, because if we go to, if we were to take it from the assessment, we would have to cut somewhere within the assessment to balance that budget at the end, because the assessment doesn't have the funds for it.
It just looks so bad. When, when does the voting for the assessment come up?
Well, typically that's done, would be done in 2021, if it was to come back.
Yeah. I wish we'd somehow look at that, because when you drive in, it looks really bad, and I...
The discussion, though, on District Two, and when we met before on it...
I remember.
Was, is that the residents need to come back and say, we want to do this. It wasn't going to be a staff-driven review of the assessment and increases again. Of course, that was back then, now it might be different. The problem is, is that everything we said that would happen is starting to happen. The parkway is going bad, those trees are going to die in that parkway, and that slope is dying off.
Right. Yeah, it just looks bad. And then Chad, thank you very much, you, I've got, how many emails have I gotten on 12,000 different things, and you've been stellar in all of them? I do have one thing that I'd like you to look into, is this recycling fee, the asphalt. There is no place to take it, that's why everybody just sort of, there's no, there's not a place in Riverside County, and there's very few in the entire state of California where you take asphalt roofing to a recycling place, so you can get the $250 back. So if, at least that's what I can find, and of course, what the, what the resident is saying, and I can't find, I can't even find one outside of 100 miles away. Do you think you might be able to find a recycling center where that stuff can be taken, so that we can let residents know? Otherwise, the idea that the $250 that they would get back, if they recycle it, there's no way to get it back. Is it, and if we can't find something, then maybe we need to look at that, and, I don't know, I don't know what you do about it, but at least what I can find, we just can't find one. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin touched on it, so I don't want to go too far, but the parkway along Hidden Valley, and I mentioned Norco Hills, Brian had talked about it, we essentially, on LMD Two, we shut the water off. If you drive down Norco Hills Road and, and the Hidden Valley, it looks bad. We need to turn the water back on. We're going to lose trees, it's going to cost us more to replace those trees in that parkway, and I'm to the point where, we had a car fire up there on Hidden, on Norco Hills Road, no, it was on Hidden Valley, right there, the, no, it's Norco Hills Road, there was a fire out there. It caught the fence on the side, and it could have gotten up into that acacia. That acacia is nothing but a, it's, it's there, it's, it's a fire hazard. Clear it off, or what do we do with acacia? But if we don't start watering those trees, that's on us. And I've already said earlier how I feel about the fence along, the trail fence along Hidden Valley. It's pathetic, and it's not a very good welcoming atmosphere when you drive into our town. So, that's where I, if we could look into that, maybe for future, see what that cost has, I know Chad, he'll tell me the meter's going to cost us a fortune, the water won't, but we got to water those trees. This is silly. Thank you.
John?
Andy? Matt? Sam? Steve? Ed? Brian?
Okay, yeah, I do. An update that everybody's been waiting for, August 3rd, the governor's office through the California Department of Public Health issued a guideline for youth sports. So youth sports, effective August 3rd, can resume. However, there are a lot of caveats to that. So, it, and there's some reflecting guidelines that go back to the CDC as well, but effectively, we will be working with our youth council on when they can come back and how they will come back, and a plan has to be developed to make sure that they understand all the guidelines and rules that are in there. Competition, as we would know, cannot be, cannot happen, scrimmages cannot happen, conditioning, skill development, agility, those things can all be done under the guidelines, as long as social distancing and the CDC guidelines are adhered to. Sports as a whole can participate under those guidelines, professional, semi-professional, and high school sports are still a different case. C I F came out, I believe, December, going into January, they will start to bring back high school sports, if everything falls in line. If we move into stage, we're at stage two right now, or what they call accelerated stage two. If that was to move to stage three, certain things will be lifted if we move into stage four. We are, one of the problems with the way the language is, is that we are also under a watch, this county is, so our guidelines are, could be a little bit more restrictive than, say, San Bernardino County or Orange County. So when you see someone else doing something, that might be, that might be some of the reasons. Either that they're just doing it because they just said the heck with it, and they're going to do it. But we are trying to adhere to the guidelines. Our day camps may be affected by that. I have a correspondence into county council related to this, to get clarification on a couple of things, and then we will be releasing the message out to the whole community, as well as to our youth sports groups. So I just want to give you an update related to the latest on the pandemic and coronavirus.
Dana?
Yes, thank you. I just want to remind the community that we have had two unscheduled vacancies for on commissions for historic preservation. We do have one unscheduled vacancy, the term will be through 2021, and the planning commission, we have a vacancy with a term that would go through 2022. We are in open recruitment now, and we ask the community to please get involved and submit their applications. You can go online to our website, and under recruitment, you can find the application and turn that in to electronically to City Hall, or bring it in yourself. And I look forward to people participating in that. Also, we are right in the middle of our election nomination period. We currently have eight potential candidates, four have qualified. I'm waiting for three to file their final papers. One has filed, and I'm waiting for the approval on their qualification. With an incumbent not submitting their candidacy, it, as of 6:00 PM tomorrow, when the nomination officially closes, it will reopen to non-incumbents, extend to next Wednesday, August 12th. So the community will have another additional, almost seven days to apply for candidacy, when an incumbent does not apply and continue with their election this year. So if anybody has any questions or concerns, or would like more information about the elections, or the commission recruitment, please give the city clerk's office a call, and we'll be happy to work with you on that. Thank you.
Greg?
Robin?
Nothing.
Brian, I got one question. You're about two months ago, you said our security system was about 90% complete, how much are we now?
We...
And why isn't it complete by now?
Oh, we are, as far as the cameras, are bad readers. Bad readers are all reading correctly, cameras is the next phase, and we're waiting for them to hook up all the software that is required for that. We met with the architect actually on Monday for Phase Two, which includes the front lobby area and redesign of the front lobby. We met with representatives from every department regarding that, that'll be next, our Phase Two process, in which then we will come back with two conceptual designs for you, and then that will be reviewed for us to make, per recommendation on one of those, and then we would go into construction documents and build it.
And when you say the front lobby, that mean those little half-doors are going to have some kind of a...
Yeah, that whole...
Bad reader on them or something?
Yeah, and not only that, Councilmember, but the, the way we allow people in and out of the front areas, how they will, how the counters operate and work now, each department has a representative on our subcommittee to actually talk about functionality and how that will work. One of the points of discussions with the architect was also ballistics, structural requirements. So we're looking at all of those. We, we want to be friendly to the public, but yet we want to also be able to provide that, that barrier or security. So that was very well, just, the, the staff that were engaged in that had a great thorough discussion, Dana's on that subcommittee too, and so we're taking a look at all that, as well as the lobby. So it really reflects to our lobbies, and that includes also the Parks and Recreation Lobby as well as part of the discussion.
Okay, good. All right, thank you. Well, with that, and nobody has anything else, we're adjourned. Kevin? You...